Inkster City Council, April fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand for the pleasure of the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
But everyone please remain standing. We'd like to ask Reverend George Spencer, please come to give us prayer.
Let us pray. Father God, we come no other way but from heart to heart leaning on your everlasting love. Father, touch our leaders. Father, touch this community, Father, and let us all demonstrate that love of unity. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Thank God.
Mayor Noley.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Otten.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Proton Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight, and we do have a call.
Anyone have a chance to look at their agenda? We, we item, item, I. Elks Lodge petition. And we are taking Franco off of the presentation. They already presented to us. We have another presentation. Michael Wells, he already, he already talked to us. So he's going to do public comments.
Okay.
So we have no presentations tonight. Any other additions, deletions to the agenda? Or motion for approval?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It carries. Opposed? It carries anyway. Okay, Mary McLemmon, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor. To the rest of the council, to the clerk, to the CFO, to all the dignitaries and the fine citizens of Inkster, I say good evening to you again. I bring you greetings from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, and it's always a pleasure to be here in the fine city of Inkster. I want you to know, it's June again, and Wayne County Commissioner Anderson will have his free senior appreciation dinner. I don't know who went last year, but I know if you went last year, you had a good time. And it's Wednesday, uh, June the twelfth, from seven until nine P.M. And it's at the Burton Manor, at two seven 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 Schoolcraft Road in the city of Livonia. You can join the commissioner for a free dinner. Uh, it's to honor the seniors, and we're talking about the real seniors. We're not talking about the A.A.R.R., what is it? A.A.R.P. seniors. What are they, forty-nine? When you get that letter, forty-nine? Not those. We're talking about the real seniors. Those that are sixty years or over. This is the ones we're talking about. I see some smiles, okay? And you can come. You know, well, you've already done it. Okay. Uh, it's the twelfth, uh, Commission District, which is Inkster, Garden City, and Westland. And, uh, you need to RSVP. Please do it, because only three hundred seniors will be allowed to attend. Now, each senior can bring a guest with them. Uh, you can bring a person along with you, but you do need to RSVP. The phone number is three one three, two two four, eight eight, five five. Again, two two four, eight eight, five five, and that's your number to RSVP. I have flyers with me tonight, if anybody needs a flyer of the dinner. And it's totally free. It's just a good time for the entire district to meet and greet, and just to have a good time. So, but be sure to RSVP, because it's more than three hundred seniors in all the communities. And we certainly know that Inkster is a, a senior-friendly community. So you need to make sure that you call and you get your place in the, uh, get your face in the place. Also, on Saturday, the tenth of August, um, I have a household hazardous waste collection, uh, information, and it'll be at the Westland Shopping Center, three five, uh, zero 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 Warren Road in Westland. And, uh, you can go there, and you can dispose of your household hazardous waste, uh, collections. But it's at the Westland Shopping Center. Be sure to go to the Westland Shopping Center. And it's at the lot behind, uh, J.C. Penney's. And I think we all know that household paints, dyes, floor wax, furniture polish, nail polish, glue, fertilizer, those are just some of the things that are considered as hazardous. And you can take them there. And again, that's Saturday, the tenth of August, from eight until two P.M. And again, I do have flyers, if anybody needs flyers, for the, uh, dinner, the free dinner, okay? Uh, be, so that you'll have your information and you can call. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. I think I saw Joel Jones sighting today. Oh, come on up.
Hello, Mayor, Council, administration, citizens. Um, I have my updates for today. I also am older. Had a birthday last week, so you know, I'm getting up there now. I'm happy about that. Thank you, thank you. Um, so, uh, following my update, so April is National Sexual Assault Month, um, here in the state of Michigan. And it's a campaign to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities on how to prevent it. Um, this is just some, some background information for everyone. One out of every six women has been the victim of an attempted or completed rape in her lifetime. About three percent of men have experienced an attempted or completed rape. On average, there are about three hundred and twenty-one thousand and five hundred victims of rape and sexual assault each year in the United States. One in three girls and one in five boys will become a victim of sexual abuse before their eighteenth birthday. And forty-five of these, forty-five percent of these victims will not disclose abuse, uh, for five years or more. There are forty-two million survivors of child sexual abuse living in the U.S. today. Survivors of sexual abuse face mental health issues, substance abuse, post-traumatic stress disorder, lost wages, and more. While this information is said, ninety-five percent of sexual abuse is preventable through education and awareness. So you have several ways to report sexual assault. If you're in immediate danger, dial nine one one to get help right away. If you are physically injured from sexual assault, tell a medical professional that you wish to report a crime. You can also find help for survivors by calling the National Sexual Assault Hotline. Uh, the number's eight hundred, six five six, HOPE. And that number's four six seven three. I also have some, uh, updates from the governor's office. Um, so Governor Whitmer signed Executive Order twenty nineteen and dash nine, uh, creating the Governor's Educator Advisory Council within the Michigan Department of Education, uh, last Thursday on April eleventh. Um, this council will consist of fifteen voting members appointed by the governor and include individuals representing various roles in Michigan's public education system. Um, this group will also advise the governor and make recommendations for legislation relevant to Michigan's public education system. So this includes identifying and analyzing issues impacting the effectiveness of Michigan's public education system, identifying best practices in public education, recommending changes and improvements to our public education system, and reviewing and making recommendations regarding legislation relevant to our public education system. Um, educators or individuals who are interested in seeking an appointment to the council may apply online at www.michigan.gov/appointments. And the deadline for this application, however, is on April nineteenth, uh, which is this Friday. I also have some updates from the Michigan Supreme Court. Um, it administers the Foster Care Review Board, or FCRB, uh, program. And so this board reviews, uh, cases of children placed in foster care to make sure they are receiving needed services and that they are placed in safe permanent homes as quickly as possible. The court is seeking citizen volunteers for membership on review boards located throughout the state. There are thirteen thousand children in Michigan's foster care system. And this board also hears appeals by foster parents who believe that children are being unnecessarily moved from their care. Recruitment for the board membership is year-round, but volunteers are encouraged to submit their applications by May first. Interviews and background, uh, checks are also required for all applicants. Um, so at the, at the moment right now, volunteers are urgently, urgently needed in Macosta, Marquette, Grand Travers, Old Sago, and Macomb, and Saint Clair, and Wayne Counties. Uh, so each board includes five citizen volunteers who regularly attend scheduled review meetings one day each month, and the board members read written case materials and surveys and interview interested parties to the case. Their recommendations are then provided in a report to the court and Child Welfare Agency. Volunteers selected must reside within the region of their local board and are appointed to a three-year term. So if you're interested in volunteering, you can contact Kelly Wagner. Um, the email address they have and the phone number is Wagner K at courts dot M I dot gov. Or you can call, um, the number five one seven, three seven three, eight six seven one. Um, also some updates from the state agencies. The Michigan Treasury Department, it's hot up here. Got this whole sweater on. Um, the Michigan Treasury Department, so the Michigan taxpayers with past due tax debts should be aware of an aggressive scam making the rounds through the U.S. Postal Service. In the scheme, taxpayers receive a government-looking letter about overdue tax bill asking individuals to immediately contact a toll-free number to resolve a state tax debt. The letter aggressively threatens to seize a taxpayer's assets, including property and social security benefits, if the state tax debt is not sta-, um, settled. Taxpayers who receive a letter from a scammer or have questions about their state debts should immediately call the Treasury's Collection Service Center at five one seven, six three six, five two six five. The number is five one seven, six three six, five two six five. That's the Treasury's Collection Service Center. Um, a customer service representative can log the scam, uh, verify outstanding state debts, and provide flexible payment options in the event that you, um, actually owe money. Uh, also, the Automobile Theft Prevention Authority, uh, also called ATPA, um, is currently accepting grant applications from law enforcement agencies, prosecutors, and nonprofit organizations for enforcement, prosecution, community awareness, and prevention programs aimed at reducing motor vehicle theft. Uh, this grant is funded from assessments paid by the insurance companies to the ATPA. And due to limited funds available, a fifty percent cash match is required for all applicants, with the exception of nonprofit organizations. Funds will be utilized to enhance motor vehicle theft prevention efforts, not to replace current programs. The fiscal year twenty twenty grant period begins October first of two thousand and nineteen and ends September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. Um, grant application must be submitted on or before June third, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, they can be obtained online at www.michigan.gov/ATPA. So I'll also send this information over to your chief. Um, as far as legislation goes, um, last week we had House Bill forty-eight, uh, forty-one eighty-five. Uh, it deals with a person who is willfully and maliciously destroying or, uh, injuring personal property or real property of any fire, uh, sheriff, or police department, um, now is guilty of a felony. Um, also, House Bill forty-one twenty-one, uh, a foreclosing governmental unit may create a delinquent property tax installment payment plan for illegible property held by a person who is financially distressed. Uh, so if a financially distressed person agrees to participate in a delinquent property tax installment payment plan and makes their initial payment required under the, the delinquent property tax installment payment plan, the foreclosing governmental unit may stop, um, the foreclosing procedure. Uh, there's also Senate Bill forty-two, uh, which directs the Michigan Secretary of State to develop a fundraising or collective license plate recognizing the Kiwanis International Michigan District. Um, and that'll be noted in August first, two thousand and nineteen. Um, so those are all my updates for today. Are there any questions?
Do you still have that email address for the, uh, redistricting?
For the?
Redistricting that you gave us the last time?
Yes, I can, I can pull it up and get it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on down the road, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, a motion, we accept the, uh, consider agenda as is?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Boards and commissions. We had a nomination last time, Mr. Roosevelt Stubbs, for which?
Uh, Commissioner on aging.
Commissioner on aging.
And I spoke with him. He has a resume on file, 'cause he's on, uh, zoning commission. And he said that he went through that before.
He did?
Yeah. Had, had conversation about his, uh, having, um...
Hey, he, how long, Mr. Mr. Stubbs, how long you been on ZBIA?
About twelve years.
So I thought, did, we didn't have that policy back then, did you?
I know. Uh, I think the city clerk came to me about three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And she gave me the information. I filled it out, I took it back, and I gave it to the young lady that sits in that front desk.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what she did with it, I don't know. Because, uh, to my understanding, there was a problem, it was a paper trail in the city. So they lost it, it's on them.
You not taking responsibility for their loss? No, I'm just messing with you. Just messing with you. Okay. I mean, we all know, Mr. Stubbs, uh, I don't like deviating from policy, but yeah, he, he grandfathered all right.
I didn't say that, Mr. Stubbs.
That's your way of calling him old, aren't you?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have something.
Sure.
Uh, I'd like to...
Oh, we got a, who made the nomination?
Oh.
I did.
Okay. So, uh, what you move, we gotta take a vote.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion, just make a motion.
Make a motion to, uh, to appoint Roosevelt Stubbs to the, um, Commissioner on Aging.
Boy. It's properly moved and supported. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It carries. Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes, I'd like to ask that Rhoda Littlez be reappointed to the Inkster Historical Commission. Her term expired, uh, February sixth this year.
We already have her information, right?
Yes.
Commission was there?
Historical.
Do we have, uh, second?
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It carries. Anybody else? Okay, I guess we'll move on. Bounce to new business.
Consideration and approval to purchase two vacant residential lots, which are located on the east side of Ash between, between Carlisle and Andover, as duly noted, in the amount of five hundred dollars to Team Cares Antonio Pacella.
Okay, did, was, do we have a motion? I missed the motion. You pulling the county mention?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It carries.
Item B is consider approval of an offer to purchase one vacant residential lot, which is located on the west side of White Coast? Court between Inkster Road and Sylvia, as duly noted, in the amount of five hundred dollars to BAM Investment Group LLC.
So moved. Okay. We have support? Okay, so probably moved and supported. Discussion.
Weren't we supposed to get some paperwork from her about them? Wasn't, uh, she gonna go back to her office and bring us some paperwork?
I think we re, we found out what they're doing and all that stuff without her even going, remember? The end of the discussion.
I still want my paperwork. It was promised to me.
Well, you can talk to her after the meeting.
All right.
I mean, what paperwork were you supposed to be getting?
It was the dates, but I realized it was also noted on page twenty-one, the property that's adjacent that they own, the two seven one eight one southern.
Okay.
This was already owned. Uh, what I was gonna go look up, the parcel associated with them.
This is not about them as a business, per fact.
Now, this is just a sale of land, the four parking lot. Business book.
That wasn't the paperwork she was gonna bring, I'm asking. It was not about them as a business.
No, 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 no. That's gonna come before us, though.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments up here? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It carries.
Item C, consider approval of the new city brand design, including but not limited to color, both secondary and primary, logo, stationery, seal, and overall brand identity presented by Franco.
Or, um, some of them. Do it again, I'm tired, I'm sorry, some of them.
We got support?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, carries.
I didn't see anything.
That's a, that's a, okay.
That's a yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a yeah.
Say nothing, that's a yes.
Item D is consideration and approval of a resolution to accept the FDCVT grant from the State of Michigan Department of Treasury for citywide mercury vapor street light conversion phase two, in the amount of hundred and forty-two thousand nine seventy-five.
So moved, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It carries.
Item E is consideration and approval of a resolution to accept the FDCVT grant from the State of Michigan Department of Treasury for new rescue ambulance for the fire department in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion.
Yeah, one, one question. Uh, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Did this make, uh, our third one?
Yes, sir.
Let's see. So we threw it all together?
Yep. Yeah, four.
Oh, okay.
Three newer ones.
Yeah, 'cause you got a backup.
Very new.
Okay. Fantastic.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It carries.
Item F, consideration and approval of a resolution to accept the FDCVT grant from the State of Michigan Department of Treasury for a police emergency vehicle replacement in the amount of a hundred thousand.
So moved. Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It carries.
Item H, consideration and approval of a street closure on Eastern Street between Avondale and Grandview on July sixth, from ten o'clock a.m. until ten o'clock P.M. And the applicant is Robert Johnson.
So moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion. Boy, did you get the invite to the party? You get, you get invited to the party?
No.
Oh, okay. Me either.
Not yet.
Right, I'm gonna crash it anyway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Item I, consideration and approval to accept the petition, petition signatures to allow consideration of an Elks Lodge Social Club at three seven six seven Inkster Road, within three hundred feet of residentially zoned land.
So moved. Support.
Been properly moved and supported. Discussion.
Yes, I have a question.
Ladies first.
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't? You was messing with Clay?
I was getting ready to ask him about hurdy-gurdy girls.
My question, so you're planning on building on the same property as was before?
No.
No?
They bought old Ernestine's, uh, wreck car.
Okay, so was that gonna tear that down, or?
Tear what down? The house?
The house.
No. They gonna operate in the house.
Oh.
Right.
That's what we're moving into.
Oh, okay, because I'm, uh...
'Cause the old building was, was, you know, it caught fire and burned down.
Yeah, I remember that.
So we bought the property next door to it, remained in the same area.
Okay. Now, I just, I just thought I was, uh, doing rebuild on that property, 'cause I remember one time they said the house was too small. But, my mistake.
Any other questions about the petitions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It carries. Public participation, my favorite part. Y'all ready? Tony Bailey, you're always number one.
She's number one.
She's number one.
Twenty-seven.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Do you want Gabe to come with you?
Mr. Green Jean?
Mr. Mr. Henderson. Get to come on up.
We got the Rev, too.
Who else, Rev, too?
Yeah, he on beautification.
Let's get it all out of the way.
Yep. Come on up. Good evening, all department heads, uh, city attorney, the, those who viewing, those in the audience. We be, I'm before, we are before you to invite you to come out to our cleanup. This is a kickoff, you know, for our annual spring cleanup, which would be the last Saturday of this month, um, uh, April twenty-seventh. We're gonna meet up at the Book of Doja at nine a.m. We wanna see everyone to come out. Besides the beautification committee, there's also the Inkster Cleanup Coalition, uh, Coalition that will be participating, you know, on our cleanup dates. We do have flyers that's on the table, so if anybody in the audience need a flyer, one of our committee members will hand you out one. We would like, um, the different ones to come out to the cleanup. Um, we will have dumpsters placed out in the four locations, which would be at Westwood Park, Wheatley Park, LeMone Park, and up at the rec center. Also, I would like to say that the top ladies of distinction, their beautification committee, they will also, um, clean on our cleanup dates. They will be cleaning the inside of the dozer. And they will ask that anyone who would like to help, they will, uh, want you to come out and volunteer and help them clean the inside of the, uh, rec center. They'll do it on every cleanup that we have. We will also have community service certificates given out to the young people that come out to clean. So when they finish cleaning, we will hand them a community service certificate. We wanna keep Inkster beautiful. And I would like to ask if our city council liaison, if she would like to have any words?
Of course I would. I just wanna remind all the citizens that this is something that everyone can take part in. Because we have, uh, set up with the coalition where you can pick up a, uh, a garbage bag and you can clean just your block if you want to that day, okay? You and your neighbors pick up the garbage around in your area. Then you contact your city councilperson. After you've collected your garbage and you put it on the A corner, select the corner, say southwest corner of whoever and whatever, you put it on your corner, then you can call your city councilperson, and they will come out and they will, uh, check where that location is. They will notify DPW or the volunteers we have with trucks to come by and get that bag and take it to one of the dumpsters already out, set out by the beautification committee. So this is something that we can do every day that the beautification committee does it. So you don't have to complain to me anymore, there's garbage on your street. You can pick it up that day yourself, and I'll come by and check it out and make sure it gets picked up. So this is something we can all do. Thank you.
So the days, um, the months that we're gonna be doing it is April all the way through September. There's a, a Saturday that we will have a cleanup.
Madam Beautification?
Yes.
Um, Shirley just gave me this and said, encourage business owners to clean up their locations as well.
Alrighty. Guys, do we have something to say?
I'm gonna be following the mayor on that date.
You follow me?
Yeah, man, you will have on some gloves and some bags.
I'm gonna be clean, I got a picker. I got one of Mr. Henderson's.
I challenge each and every last one of you.
I think I could last longer than you, old man.
I accept.
We'll see. We will see.
Challenge accepted.
Right, you know, I was wondering about your cold enforcement people, you know, I know they be touring around, you know, neighborhood and all that business and all that. And I think they should be, uh, when they see some business violation, they should go and talk to it with the people, you know. They probably could, I've talked with a few people in certain businesses about, you know, when I was cleaning up a certain area. So I just hope our cold enforcement people, you know, you know, and, uh, not strong-arm some of these businesses, but, but talk, hey, you, well, tell them, you know, you should do better. You should do better, you know? 'Cause you want people to come to your business, keep it nice and clean. Hey, that'd attract more people to come to your business.
Okay.
So.
Chief, you catching all this? You sleeping, chief, I saw you. I saw you sleeping. You didn't catch any of it, did you? Okay. All right, fellas, well, thank you all, I appreciate you.
I do, I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, towards the neighborhood, you know, there's some vacant lots where people just throw trash into vacant lots. And sometimes that trash is like at the back of the lot or against somebody's fence.
Mm-hmm.
Um, have you reached out to, like, any type of groups that might be able to?
I've been asking different groups to come on out.
Well, we still do that. The Cleanup Coalition still cleans up big areas, and that includes a lot of people. The Cleanup Coalition still cleans up big areas, and that includes a lot of people. The way we did it the last couple of years, if you have a big lot somewhere that has a whole bunch of stuff, we notify Bud or Jerome, they will get us a dumpster and put it in that area. They will give us the, uh, back hole to lift the other stuff, all we need is volunteers at that time. So if you let the Inkster Cleanup Coalition know where this is, we'll set a date, we'll put out flyers, we'll talk to the people in the neighborhood, and then we'll clean it up at some point.
And they'll pick up brush as well?
We did the last time.
Okay. I wasn't aware of last time, so I thought I was asking, is that what they do?
We've done it every time.
If we know anybody that do, do have a trailer though, it, it, it's helpful. We know when we go down the streets, we see things like that, we just throw it in the trailer.
Right.
And then, well, Bibbins ain't here, I don't know where y'all got him locked up at. May, may, maybe, um, uh, he can get a, uh, somewhere we can put it, you know, dump, dump the stuff out of it. And we get somebody in the neighborhood that who has a trailer, when we go up and down the street, we just throw them, throw all the mattresses and stuff like that we see in neighborhood.
Well, that little thing you all use picks up all that. Remember Tony, last time, he picked up all that stuff like that with the little back hole thing they had. He can.
They don't have enough man for us to go over the whole city, so it's a lot, it's a lot of stuff need to be picked up.
I thought we would just do them on section, you wouldn't call us and give us a whole city to do in one day, would you?
Well, I, I always was, was, was told that we go wherever there's a lot of trash at and try to clean it up.
And we would expect to be notified where that was.
I know I be in a lot of different districts.
All you have to do is let us know where it is and we'll work that area.
Let you know where it's at.
Oh, for the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, yeah, we're doing the whole city.
We're gonna be going around and see what areas, main areas, and if, um, any of the council have different areas to let us know, so we can have that, and when the different groups come, we can tell them where they can go and pick up.
What's the contact number for the pickup?
You got some areas that it will take you a week and a half, a week, or two weeks to clean it up. You're not gonna be able to clean all that up in no one day.
Is there a contact number where you can call to say where this, where this trash is, is in vacant lots? Is there?
I can give my phone number.
Oh, I have yours. Uh, but you gonna give it to Puppy, go ahead.
My phone number is three one three five two zero two five seven one. That's three one three five two zero two five seven one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all, appreciate you. Officer Lebo. Moving slow now, isn't it?
Why you bawling?
Well, then. Good after, good evening, everybody. First of all, I would like to give a big shout out and a big thank you to all the organizations who made this weekend's Easter egg hunt possible. It was a really great time, and I'm glad so many citizens were able to, uh, come out. We had over eight hundred kids registered this year, and that's double last year. It was a really, really fun event, so thank you, everyone involved, and thank you for the citizens for coming out and making it even better. Couple of announcements we have, our next Coffee with the Cop is this Wednesday, April seventeenth at ten AM, Applewood Coney Island. Come on out, join us for a cup of coffee and some good conversation. Next, we are still recruiting Inkster boys ages fourteen to fifteen for a youth leadership academy in partnership with the state police. It's a five-day stay away camp, um, from June twenty-third to June twenty-seventh up at Lansing at the Michigan State Police Training Grounds. It's a really cool academy, it gives the, the kids some good tools in their tool belt, such as leadership skills, um, team building, resume building. They'll go home with a outfit, ready to wear to interviews, college, college applications, things like that. If you have a young man that you think is interested, please reach out to myself or Trooper DeClerc. I have some flyers over there, and his phone number is at the bottom. Other than that, we are still looking for organizations who are interested in having a free booth at our National Night Out, which is going to be Tuesday, August sixth, from five to nine PM at the police department. Free advertising for Inkster businesses. As we say, shop Inkster, come to me so we can get the word out there what you're doing. Thank you all for your time.
Alright.
All right. Gina Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Gina Stewart, one zero seven four eight West Jefferson, River Rouge. I'm here today to say hello, I haven't been here in a minute. But we are partnering with the Delta Sigma Theta Inkster Chapter for an exclamation fair, and we're just reminding everybody to come out. If you have, uh, one felony or two misdemeanors, you can get those, possibly get those off your record. There will be attorneys on site to help out, to, uh, help you work your information. Then they'll also have a job opportunities available for people who have a felony or misdemeanor. It is going to be, uh, America International Academy on May fourth from ten to two. So we are hoping everyone will come out, we will be doing a voter registration on that day as well. And, um, I think that's about it for the exclamation fair. But I just wanted to remind everybody that with the NAACP, you know, we cover twenty-four cities, and so on each quarter, we take our meetings on the road. So do not go to Christian Faith next month in May, cause we won't be there. That's one of our off-site meetings, we will actually be in River Rouge at the Telegram Building, one zero seven four eight West Jefferson. The meeting is still at seven o'clock, seven till eight thirty. We're gonna do environmental justice will be our topic for the day. And as you know, when you drive through our neighborhood, River Rouge neighborhood, you have to have your seatbelt on, and right by the school is twenty-five miles an hour, and right on Jefferson is thirty. That's my warning, I always let people know, I don't want you to get there, get mad at me, cause you got a hundred and sixty-five dollar ticket. So that's the commercial I give to everybody coming that way, that's why we don't have much stuff down there, cause it's not worth the headache. So the main thing is the exclamation fair, please.
Did you give us the address of which academy, it's on the Avondale one?
Yes, two seven one zero zero Avondale, and it's from ten to two on May fourth. That's it.
Julia Lo.
May first? Okay.
Good afternoon, you know my name, cause you said it, right?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I'm on, I'm here, I don't know this question, so I'm here for all you guys to listen to what I have to say and give me an answer. I don't know about the court system, I usually, I, I don't get tickets or whatever, but, uh, I'm here because my fiancee got a ticket, okay? It was turning on, no turn on red light, come to find out, his license was suspended in Ramness. We took care, that was a forty-five dollar, they suspended it, so it was taken care of, and he had a court day. Well, he had, we came to Inkster, he end up, um, wanting to pay the ticket. Apparently, he couldn't pay it, because he missed the court day. So we end up paying the one fifty, bu bond, or whatever they wanna call it. So we end up going to court. We talked to the prosecutor, he dropped it from driving without, no, driving while license suspended to driving without ops.
Okay.
Okay? So when he talked to the prosecutor, asked the question, how much you think it is? He quote one forty-five. We got into court. It was a five hundred and fifty-five dollar ticket. She took the hundred and fifty and put it towards the ticket. All these fines, I guess, whatever, 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 whatever added up to that, I don't think so. But I'm here because this is outrageous. I live in Inkster, I, I'm a homeowner, you know what I'm saying, I pay taxes. I'm, I'm out here in a community, you know me, it's a couple y'all, I, I volunteer to do whatever it takes. But for somebody to get this, all this money for one ticket, there's something wrong with that. And he's not the only one, he's not here because he's working, but I'm here in his defense, he's not the only one. There's people in court that let somebody drive their car without license. She end up paying five hundred and something, fifty-five dollars. This is ridiculous, all I want is some answers. I don't know, I asked around, but I didn't ask in Inkster. So I'm asking you guys to help me out on this and understand why it's so many fees and why one ticket is five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Well, you're in luck, the city attorney's sitting right here, you need to look at what she has, man?
No, I, I don't need to see it.
Okay.
Um, first of all, driving without a license is a misdemeanor.
I understand all that.
The reason she, he couldn't just come down and pay the ticket is because he had to be found either guilty or not guilty. So once he entered a negotiation with the city attorney, it was probably someone that works for me, wasn't me, because I wouldn't have ever told him it was a hundred and forty-five dollars. The potential fines are zero up to five hundred dollars for driving without a license or no ops on persons, the same fine, and it's completely within the judge's discretion to fine zero or to fine five hundred. So typically, when she's on the higher end, she does that because she has the person's driving record in front of them. And the person may have had it suspended for a while, may have had other suspensions, and she, it's a sliding scale, but it's all within her discretion.
And I understand, I understand all that, you know, but it, I'm, and I'm saying this out of me, if we would've known that, that it was suspended from Ramness for forty-five dollars, we would've took care of it, cause he drives, you know? But I understand all that, but one ticket, seriously, I mean.
Well, that's the state legislator, you have a, you have a state politician here, they, they set the fines, that's all done by the legislature.
And it's just not him, but it's a lot of people, and, and some of these fines, some of the fines, I'm looking at like, you know, okay, uh, building costs, five dollars, all this, whatever, whatever, you know what I'm saying? It's ridiculous.
Can I just ask, not to go in the back and forth, but was the, how good or bad was his driving record?
I mean, he, he, he was suspended from Ramness.
For how long had he been suspended?
I think a couple of months, until, because he was laid off working, he couldn't pay the ticket, you know? And he was like, didn't pay it, and then when we found out they were suspended, whatever, then he went down there and paid what he had to pay.
I would say this about Judge Johnson, she's typically very reasonable and fair and even-handed. So I can't speak to your particular example, but she usually, if a person has been fairly conscientious about trying to pay their tickets and fines and pay them off quickly, she doesn't typically fine on the higher end of the scale.
I understand that, she probably is fair, she was real fair to this one guy who was driving with license suspended and is still suspended. The day before he come to court, he get pulled over, driving without the seatbelt, Lexington, Lex, whatever his name, I'm sorry, Miss Pock pronounced it. He stopped him, and he brung it up in court, and she let him go. Now, is that, that's fair, not to me, maybe to everybody else, it might be fair, but that wasn't fair, he keep driving on suspended license. And he walked out the door just like we walked out the door. I'm not downing her, I don't know her personally, I never been in front of her, but I'm just saying, it's something. The city of Inkster, half of these people can't afford to even pay their taxes, but when they get a ticket or whatever, they gotta come. Another, uh, um, one, my friend, good friend, he got a ticket, he parked in front of his house. No, no parking in, on the street because they was cleaning it. It was a forty-five dollar ticket, he end up going, had to go to court to make the, uh, make his speech or whatever to the judge. He end up leaving there and have to pay a hundred and forty-five dollars.
I wish we could address you, but court is separate.
This is ridiculous, you know, and I'm just saying, this is ridiculous for real, it is. We, we, we trying to come back. I'm so ready to move because it's just so much, but I'm not. I'm not from Inkster, I moved here, you know what I'm saying, but we gotta come together, and we gotta realize, we ain't rich. We ain't even a blue collar, we beyond that.
Wait a minute now.
I'm sorry, but it, for these tickets, for people to get tickets.
We understand.
You know, and it's ridiculous.
You singing to the choir right now.
You know, and I, I, I was gonna come real mad.
This is not mad?
Ask my sister right there, if it wasn't for her.
No, she's mild right now.
She's mild.
Yeah. You know what I'm saying, but I, I mean, I appreciate y'all listening to me, but we, we gotta figure something out though, seriously. Five hundred and fifty-five dollars for a ticket.
You see Joel Jones right there? He's a state representative, they pass legislation, you gotta see him on that one.
Uh, I'm seeing y'all, y'all the city of Inkster, I pay my taxes to you guys, I appreciate y'all listening.
Thank you. Shirley Hankson, you still need us? Okay, you good, thank you. Okay, we ready, is that everybody? Okay, Madam Clerk?
No comments tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Treasurer?
We just need to discuss.
Study sessions. You guys ready, it's budget time.
Oh, yeah.
Budget, 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 budget time.
Little more excitement, please?
Yeah.
Where we get our books?
So we, we, we expect to have the mayor's recommended budget by first part of next week, but because we aren't, um, uh, I guess we had three weeks before, before our next meeting, we wanted to go ahead and, um, set the, um, get some ideas of what some days and times are where everyone is available for the, uh, budget hearings.
Mm-hmm.
I'm available on Mondays.
Okay, we can do that, oh, we have a fifth Monday in this month, so we can do that first. Everybody's excited about budget time.
Well, I'm excited.
Yeah, you, this is where you like this stuff.
What date was that?
We can do that fifth Monday in April.
Twenty-ninth.
Cause we have no council meeting.
Monday, April.
You said the ninth?
Yep.
Yeah?
Twenty-ninth.
Okay.
That's a day that we used for, uh, what time?
What we use though?
I can't click on it, never mind, never mind, it's in the day, it's not in the evening.
Okay.
So you said April, you said April.
We can do it during the day, cause Kim's off that day.
What time is that?
That helps, I mean, what, what time you wanna do? We usually, we did two or three last year, I'm not sure, long sessions.
Yeah, we did.
We, there's a chance we can get it packed into two, but we're gonna have to go long, you know, it might be three, four hours for each session.
So we gonna get our books next week?
Yeah.
So we can study?
Yeah, what happened to you, exactly ahead of time?
So we can study it before, be ready before we have it, okay.
Do we have a meeting on the twenty-ninth?
No, no.
Wait, no, he's asking me, are you?
I'm telling you.
Oh, duh. For what?
So what?
What meeting do we have on the twenty-ninth?
Certain, me, her, and others who were, uh, uh, voice for changing the meeting candidates.
Okay, I see, that's true.
What time is that?
That's at twelve noon, I just want you to keep that in mind, so.
At twelve noon, ours is at six P, right?
No, 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 we can, whatever time we want to.
Oh, I thought we said two.
It's Monday.
Just make up your mind, just make up your mind and tell me.
Okay, what time do you guys wanna start, if you have a meeting at twelve, or you wanna start one thirty?
Somebody else have a meeting at? Thought of her kind of situation.
Well, I thought you said two, I, somebody said two.
Okay.
It doesn't matter what time it is.
I think, I think the, the budget meeting is, uh, should take precedence, cause we talking about the city budget. Other stuff is secondary. Just wanted to point out that it was at twelve, so if we need to move it to two, we can, whichever way, it doesn't matter.
Just leave your meeting at twelve and the budget session starts at two.
All right, two o'clock, two o'clock, that Monday twenty-ninth, the first one? When we wanna do the second one? Kim, what's your other day off?
I'm only off on Monday.
That's it? We gotta squeeze, so Kim's gonna have to meet with Darren.
Yeah.
Uh, individually.
What's the deadline for having it done?
May, by the second meeting.
May twentieth.
We used to do it the first meeting in May, just in case there's some issues and we don't pass it that night. But if we push it to the second meeting, that means we have to add something. Kinda pushing up against the deadline.
But what about a Saturday?
Oh, no.
Well, I'm just, what are you talking about, Darren McGee, nobody else putting nothing out there, I'm just making suggestions.
Depends on what Saturday, I have two that are taken.
Um, we're doing the twenty-ninth?
I'm trying to see, six, seven. Well, I don't, let me see, looks, looks like, I don't know, I don't have anything on May eighth.
Eighth on a Wednesday? Kim, you wanna do it in the morning before you go to work?
No, I'm out of that.
Oh, that's right.
I'm gonna meet with Dan.
Okay, she, she'll meet with Dan directly.
Oh, okay.
So y'all wanna do the eighth?
April's for me.
Okay.
Um, eighth of May.
Yeah, can you do it? You wanna do ten? Connie can bring us lunch, in case we go to the twelve. If we don't finish, then we'll set another day.
What did he say?
Once you have all this solidified, you'll be emailing us. Once you have all this settled, you'll be emailing us. Thank you.
All right, so we have two days set, so we'll go from there, see how far we get.
That's how we do it in two days.
Mr. Treasurer, you have anything else?
Oh, that's it, thank you.
Okay. All right, Councilman Chisholm.
Great. Good evening, I just passed, oh crap, it went away. This past weekend, um, Saturday, I did have an opportunity to attend the Inkster Egg Hunt with all the energy-filled kids. Um, I did re, get reminded on what the meaning of a public servant was, cause when I showed up at ten thirty, I began breaking a sweat, carrying tables, doing everything else possible, so, yes, Ms. Strowman and Ms. Nolan. Um, I just had a lot of fun, we had tons of eggs, tons of kids, tons of marshmallows, I'm glad the wind chilled out when it did, cause that marshmallows would've been down middle belt. Also, that same day attended Sean Day, or hashtag Sean Day, hashtag Sean Strong, which was a cancer surgery fundraiser put on by, uh, Piling Air Fat and others over on, at three eight zero one Inkster Road. And we did have a lot of leftover hot dogs and whatnot at the Easter Egg Hunt. We tried to figure out what to do with them, I had the idea of donating it to the homeless, so we did go down to Detroit to the NSO, and we donated those items to the homeless, so they did get put to good use, cause this stuff was food that was cooked. So, instead of throwing it out, so they were very grateful, those that were on the street, and then we walked into the building, it was like a swarm of people just in there that are just in need, so we did help out there. And also, I think that was it, yeah, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Howard. Councilwoman Howard?
Um, I attended Princeton Block Club meeting Saturday evening. And it was a couple of things that was discussed, and I told them that I would kinda relate to counsel. One of the questions, where there was a lot of trucks that roll, that go down Princeton. Now, is the truck route from Beach Daily to John Daly? Do you know? Okay, so it is a truck route, okay, because they didn't know, okay.
No, I'm sorry, I apologize.
What?
So, to, to get to Princeton, they're supposed to come southbound on John Daly from Michigan Avenue, and they can turn around Princeton from there. They're not allowed, uh, with the exception of FedEx trucks and things of that nature, they're not supposed to be coming down Princeton. Is what I was told with ordinance when I checked. So, that is not a truck route, they're supposed to be coming down.
Cause they said it's a lot, it's a lot going on with you. Uh, also, um, streets, and we are working with the streets, with the potholes, so, but I just told them that I would mention it. But they were asking if they can get a bigger sign put on Beach Daily in Princeton that said, "No trucks", cause they do have a sign there, so. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, officer.
Councilwoman Wyler?
Have nothing.
Sure. Okay, Councilman Oden?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, thanks. Um, two things, uh, one, I'd like to thank the, uh, DPS for the job that they did on preparing the lights along Middle Belt from Cherry Hill down through, uh, Avondale, just past that Avondale. Been a little bit brighter now. I, I happened to pick up on that a week or so ago, and I want to thank them for that job, because I've been talking about it for, uh, some time. So I want to say thanks and, uh, you know, keep up the good work. The other item I wanted to mention is, uh, today, uh, talking with one of the people in my district. Uh, he was raising a saying about a vacant house that's been vacant for a good period of time. Uh, with a trailer in between the two houses, trash everywhere. And it just so happened, I wound up talking to, I, I called the police chief. We talked about it, we discussed it. I met him at that house, and right away, uh, in a short period of time, uh, we determined that somebody was living in this house. And, uh, he called his people, they came out, he checked it out, it's being addressed now. And the person was actually living in a vacant boarded-up house with trash everywhere along the street at seven ten, um, Central. And, uh, I mean, people started looking and checking things out and so forth, but he was there in a short period of time. He got his people out there, they investigated, they tagged the building, and so forth. It was, it was done in a short period of time. And I know that the people along that stretch are, are, are very proud of it. Now, this was a gentleman that, just so happened, I stopped by to check on him. And he started telling me about what was going on, he was cussing and he was fussing and so forth, and I called the chief. In a short period of time, the chief was there, and you know, it was addressed. The other thing that was, uh, brought up was the fact that a, along that same street on, uh, Central, a house had been caught a fire, that I made a note of. And, uh, I think that was already being taken care of, if I'm not mistaken, from what the chief said. But, uh, cause it'd been burned pretty bad, and it's just a bad impact on the community. I just want to say thanks to him for responding as quickly as he did, and the fact that, uh, the place is being tagged. And eventually, that person, well, that person's gonna be gone now because he's been standing there, but it was a real eyesore, and I say thank you again.
All right, we'll jump on that. Thanks. Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Uh, I need to ask, uh, that, I forgot something. I needed to nominate, renominate, as to she be renominated. You got it?
Yep, we got it.
Uh, I would like to, uh, have Shirley Hankerson, uh, renominated for the Parks and Recreation.
Okay, we have her information.
Yes, we do.
Go ahead and put in a motion form.
Uh, I nominate Shirley Hankerson, um, as a continuing member of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Boy, and probably move with supportive discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. It carries.
Thank you. Um, there's a problem on my street and down Parkwood with people who think they're on a freeway. Uh, I have mentioned it to the police department that if they would monitor that area, they would make a lot of money. But I noticed today that there's only one speed limit sign between Middle Belt and Colonial. Just one, and it's at, uh, when you turn off Middle Belt on the Parkwood going east. And I'm wondering if that would help, because the other idea, one, one, um, of my, um, residents wanted speed bumps in the street, but I didn't think that was gonna work, because when you have an emergency run, you can't irk and then run and then, so that didn't, I knew that wouldn't fly. But at least, uh, if we can find some signs to put up, speed limit signs to put up. Is there a rule about how many miles or feet or whatever? Can we put one per block or something like that? Well, I'll, I'll tell you exactly where we think we'd like them, because they really do fly through there. All right, thank you. Um, and here's a concern I have, you know, when we did the budget last year, I asked for you to put some money in the budget for the council to have mailings. And I think we gave, because my suggestion was that we get a bulk mail permit for the city council. And, um, when it comes to things like, uh, the cleanup, some people watch, but not everybody knows. And to walk your whole area to tell everybody is not going to work. So, I thought that if we could, uh, set up a system whereby we get the bulk mail permit, and then maybe every three or four months, if everybody has a calendar of what they're going to do, all of the council members' activities could be put on a big card or something and be mailed to all our residents. And that way, everybody is informed, because, you know, communication is a difficult thing to accomplish. Even with the world of technology, not everybody has it. Not everybody even has cable in our city. So, that's just a suggestion, because I'm really concerned about the cleanup. I want my area to do it, but I'm on two sides of the, and it's, it's just impossible to get to everybody.
Good idea.
Yeah, so.
I mean, and to incorporate all our stuff on one thing, like you do your news letter, will you pay for ours?
Sure. I mean, just, it, it's just cost prohibitive, we can do it. I mean, but it's twenty-five hundred dollars a time we send out some.
Is it?
Yeah, that's eighteen cents a, a pop, so that's what bulk rate is. Um, it's twenty-five hundred.
Well, then we'll ask for an increase in our budget.
Yeah, we got a budget meeting coming.
Yeah, we got a budget meeting coming up. Yeah, right, that's great.
So, that's, that's just an idea, cause I, I really want, if people don't know, they can't be involved.
True.
Uh, I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, I do wanna say, and everybody else has said it, but I do wanna say that Saturday was exciting. Everybody's excited about the helicopter. My husband came and sat in the parking lot just to watch it. But, thank you, everybody, but I do wanna say, thank you to Mabel Strowman, Oprah Nolan, uh, Officer Lebo, um, help me out here. Resident, Incester Housing Resident Council, Father Clifton, Reverend Williams, Jennifer Williams, um, those are the people who sat at the table.
Oh, then you have to add me.
And, and she sat at the table on Saturday. And thank you for that. Uh, but those are the people who sat at the table and put this together and out. Um, because it's not an easy thing to do, you know, you got a whole lot of people and you're trying to get everybody in one place. But I spoke with a young woman who said, came to me and said, "This is really wonderful." She said, "I do not live in your city, but I want you to know that I feel very welcome here, and this has been a beautiful experience for my children." And boy, that I was feeling good at that point, because that's the kind of thing we want people to feel about the city of Incester. Uh, it was a huge success, everybody ate well, they played well, and thank you all of Incester for your support for what we try to do. The, the unity in the community, uh, group which sponsored the task force with all the people I've mentioned before, actually came out of the Incester Task Force, and is the brainchild of Mabel Strowman and, and Oprah Nolan, because in the city of Incester, we tend to do the same thing over and over and over again, as opposed to everybody trying to come together to do one great thing. So, it seems to be working, and we invite others who have organizations, uh, churches to come and, and work with us. The next big thing is the backpack giveaway, another big day, and that'll be in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you. I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago, about Annapolis Point, the lights that's going on Annapolis, those lights still have, they're still out. And then, this has brought to my attention, over in the, the whole overall area, Annapolis Point where the vacant lots are, we had lights all through there. Those lights are flashing on and off at night.
Really? All right, we'll check them out.
Okay. Um, and I have a, I had citizens today who called me about her water bill. And I talked about this last week, about, um, let me just tell you what's going on. She got a water bill last month, that's, where she had twenty-three units of water consumed. It's a lot of water, twenty units of water. Only three people in the house, three people in the house. She says, now, all the long, they've been getting a bill that says they have five units of water, so they paying seventy-seven dollars. And then, they've told me what it's been estimated, cause they got this three hundred and fifty-four dollar bill. This month, they get a bill that's, what, nine units consumption, but the bill is five hundred dollars. It's more money.
Something's wrong.
Something's wrong.
Yeah. So, like I said, we have this system, and they're being, they're getting sent a bill that's telling them one thing, you know, and they're, and they're paying the bill every month, but then they come pay the bill, um, six, seven months later, and then it's this balloon bill.
Y'all bought the Cadillac of water meters, remember that?
And nobody's monitoring the bells and whistle.
I don't think they work.
Well, they might let, they might not be turned, but they work.
Oh, man.
So.
So, so, um, this, this situation, I'll, I'll need to get the address, obviously, Mayor Proton, but. What, oftentimes, what may be happening is if we aren't getting a meter reading, um, from a particular, uh, account or address, we send out an estimated bill, and that's, that, that, uh, policies is in, is in place, due in part to not wanting to not bill someone, um, if we don't have a reading, and then socking them with a large bill. Sometimes what happens is if we get, uh, a number of months back to back where we're doing an estimated bill, by the time we get an actual reading, if you have a situation where the estimated bill is below the actual usage, that catch-up bill sometimes can still, um, result in a large, uh, one-time charge occurring. Because we're, depending on how many months we're catching up, I don't know if it's that situation, but, but that's, you know, that's something that we're trying to address. We're trying to get out, and, and anytime we have these estimated bills, we have, you know, I think there's a, over a few hundred accounts that fall into this category.
Thing is, their water bill is, like, three people in the house and it's five units, and seventy-seven dollars all the time.
Yeah, the five, five units, it sounds like it was an estimate.
It's been saying, it's been saying actual though. Their, their water bill says actual. So, if they getting an actual reading, but then the numbers are fluctuating from twenty-three down to nine, and number they should be, be at five, there, there's an issue.
Smart meters are supposed to be bad, though.
Well, no, and, and I, I tell, I was telling, we said before that those, uh, the, and the MTU, which is the battery, they last ten years, well, the ten years is now. So, quite a few of those, well, actually was last year, cause, um, the, uh, water department's been changing those, uh, those batteries.
Yeah, it's about eleven, you about right on eleven, so about eight years, about eight years. I remember when they came and put my meter in, so.
So, so how, how do we deal with this issue, you know, I mean, you got these people paying all this money?
We gotta get a, we, the problem is, is doing estimations. If we get an actual reading and everything is working properly, if, 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 then you'll get the actual reading. But when we estimate, like you said, you might estimate five units, five units for six months, and the seventh month, for whatever reason, we'll get a reading, and they've been using eight units. So now you're going backwards, and you're paying, you're paying all those, for that six months, the extra three units, on top of what you used that month, those eight. And you get a big crazy bill. And it's not fair, cause customers thinking they're using, you know, five.
They've been paying and keeping up.
Yeah, they don't know, I mean, you know.
Yeah, so what do we do, what do we do about the system, so that, so do we eliminate that?
Buy a new one? Five million.
If you got, if you got, if you got X amount of customers, or, I mean, X amount of citizens that's paying these bills, and everybody here and there is having that problem, then, you know. We need to find out what the problem is.
And customer, in the short term, what we've been trying to do, we have a list of those accounts. And so we've been going out, um, and it's either requiring us to reset the meter, reset the MTU, or, you know, sometimes it could be a battery issue, sometimes it could be, you know, changing a meter. Um, so we've been going through, uh, that list, but the list is longer than we, longer than the people that we have to, to get around it. Uh, but it's something that, you know, we, it's actually been our, our, kind of our top priority as it relates to, and I think we've got, three people now that are, um, uh, assigned to that task, you know, when we don't, when we don't have to pull them off for water main breaks and the light. So we, we've tried to prioritize it, but there, you know, it's a list of, a long list of accounts that, um, are having these, these issues for, where we're not getting, for whatever reason, sometimes, again, we just need to reset the MTU. Sometimes we have to swap out the meter or change a, uh, uh, battery or something. Um, but, you know, we, we've got a list of these accounts that don't have, uh, we aren't getting readings from on a regular basis.
Um, last thing, second to the last thing. Um, about a month or so ago, we had, uh, I was talking about the potholes in the city, and I got sent a pothole list, for where they're going to start at, okay? Not to know where are they, with our understanding that we don't have a lot of water main breaks and they've been sort of preoccupied, but where are we right now with the pothole list?
We've been working on Avondale, John Daly, that are, are words, two roads, major roads. We're gonna start creeping into the neighborhoods, probably in another week or two.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And as usual, shot Incester.
All right, just kind of a on-the-road situation, we did meet with our engineer, city engineer today, and we've decided we're going to fix John Daly Road first. It, it, it's, uh, moon craters on John Daly, from Michigan Avenue to the park entrance. And, yeah, it's not, but you know, that's not a, a big stretch of road. Estimate is two point three million dollars, just for that stretch. So you guys have to understand, and we're gonna attack these, cause we don't have a choice, but Avondale runs the length of the city, and it's messed up, and Harrison goes always from Michigan Avenue to Annapolis. We're talking millions, and I think Harrison, the ballpark, we're talking about six million dollars just to fix Harrison. We only have so much in the budget each year. So we have enough, because we had something left over from last year, and we have some money, so we can do John Daly. Now we gotta attack these big streets, we got to do them in sections. So you're gonna have to have some patience, even though it's tearing up your car, I know it's tearing up mine, I drive down John Daly every single day, and Avondale. But, we're talking crazy numbers, you know, so if we just do it with our state revenue sharing money every year, it's gonna take forever. You know, we may have to go out and get some bonds and, and borrow some money, if you wanna fix all this stuff at the same. You know, we may have to go out and get some bonds and, and borrow some money, if you wanna fix all this stuff at the same time, but it's, we're talking enormous numbers. We're not even talking about the infrastructures too, we still, still gotta replace all that, the water mains are breaking, we gotta replace all that stuff. So, it, it's a huge task, but we are, we are on top of it, and we're gonna start chopping it down, start working towards it, cause you know, we gotta attack it.
Are we looking at concrete or, or blacktop?
John Daly concrete, there's not much difference for that stretch between the price for concrete and blacktop, concrete lasts longer. So we're gonna, we're gonna go concrete, you know, we did Avondale, what, ten years ago? It should've lasted a lot longer than it's lasted, it's falling apart now. Though as I wasn't around, I don't know what happened, what went wrong, but it, something went wrong, um, because it's, it's horrible. Um, and it floods on top of that, so, we're, we are gonna work on it, just like we uh, we set the plan out in the state of the city. Um, Sean Day was great, it's a young man, if you don't know, who has leukemia, they were raising money for his family, he had to have bone marrow uh surgery. His brother donated his bone marrow, I think he's about ten, eleven. Brave, 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 uh, got a chance to meet him on Saturday, which was great, I told him he was a hero. Um, so we, you know, hopefully we helped the families much, you know, a little bit, raised some money, and a lot of people came out, so it was good to see everybody out. Obviously, Easter egg hunt, everything's been said about that, uh Chief and I on Saturday, this is all Saturday, Saturday was crazy. We went to the Dearborn Heights Rotary Club, they had a fundraiser, and they wanna now, I'm telling you, we got synergy going, you know, they want to incorporate Inkster into their Rotary Club and connect with our city. Um, and they haven't, you, you haven't heard nothing like that for, you know, forever. So the guy approached me, he said, hey, I wanna bring Inkster into the fold, there's no reason why we shouldn't all be together, we're a region, we should work together, blah, 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 blah. So Chief and I endured the dinner, we had our lobster and steak, which was perfectly cooked. We were representing you. We took one for the team.
That's why y'all been sleeping on the side.
Right, right, we did, we did. Uh Lunch with the Mayor is this Thursday, the eighteenth, it's uh gonna be a rainy day, so we're gonna have some rainy day food, I don't know what it is, but we'll figure it out. Um, so come on out, we'll have some good stuff to talk about, cleanup, I just wanna, somebody hit me on Facebook, they were driving down the street, they got disgusted, they said some, saw some garbage in a vacant lot, and they contacted me, it's like, Mayor, this is ridiculous, don't we have some employees can drive around the city and pick up trash? I said, no, we have a trash company, I mean, if you put the trash in a barrel, we'll pick it up once a week. Um, I said, but we, I said, the residents, we have to keep our own yards clean, our own neighborhoods clean.
That's right.
No one's coming to swoop in and pick up garbage next to your house, you're gonna have to pick it up, if you want, you want your neighborhood to be clean. But it's just funny, the mentality, this was a younger person, I mean, do you think we got people who can just ride around picking up garbage? I mean, but you know, I nicely explained it to her, and she said, okay, well, she'll chip in, which was great, and that's what we need.
Make sure she knows, we have gone down in droves and cleaned up areas, and they waved to us from their windows.
Well, that's, that's a good way to get the, get the community involved.
So we should start posting our flyer for cleanup on social media, start calling people. Look, they gotta tell me, no, if we, if we can get our, I mean, it's the same people every time. I mean, if I see Red Wings one more time, picking up a paper, you know, Tony Bay, it's the same ten, fifteen, twenty people. But we got twenty-five thousand people in this city. You know, we, we, we gotta do better, but it's definitely important, we have to keep our own neighborhoods clean, our own streets, we have to fix all our own problems. So that, that's the point of what I'm trying to say. May eighteenth, Wayne County Church's office is coming to Inkster to knock doors, we got our pre- foreclosure list, about three hundred and sixty-five homes on it. So on May eighteenth, from twelve to three, we're asking for volunteers, they're bringing their whole staff, we're gonna go knock on the doors of people who are in trouble, and try to give them the information so they can save their homes. Um, we did a good job, I think Tim Williams did that.
Yeah, we did it by district, yeah, by district, so we're asking all the council people who can.
I'm not calling no names out. And we're gonna go knock doors, so three hours, hopefully we can get them all in three hours, um, and just let, let people know their options, cause we, we don't want foreclosures, when everybody stay in the house. In May eighteenth, from twelve to three.
So you're meeting here?
At the Dozier.
Oh, you're meeting at the, okay.
Is, is that the same one we had a year or two ago?
So that's all I got, um, it's been a busy, busy time of the year, I'm glad it's getting warm, I'm happy and now the sun's out. So uh, we gotta get outside and, 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 and get these parks together and get, get ready for the summer.
I have one more thing I forgot to say in my comments, um, sorry about that, Mayor. April, April twenty-second, I am gonna have a district advisory meeting here, if applicable. Um, at five o'clock, for those who are interested, you are welcome to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, really? Good, we'd be out there anyway, so.
Mayor, I got one, I got one other thing, I, I, I didn't, didn't catch.
Okay.
Adriana, our city planner, I wanna thank her for the job, working with me, get the information together, to deal with the elk logs. She took the time, she went through and dealt with what she needs to deal with, explained a few things to me, I just want to say thank you.
She appreciates all that, she doesn't get a lot of thank yous. She's the bad guy in the city. Alright, anybody have anything else?
What's your for adjournment?
Support.
And probably move and support it, discussion, all those in favor say aye. It carries, see y'all later.